The divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
That's my... You have the floor.
I'm the floor?
You have the floor.
First, I want to thank all of you for your continued wonderful service here at the Linsburg, for your services council pursues and others, and I know you're not thanked enough, and we give thanks for all that you do. Gracious God, we give thanks for your love of us that calls us together, that calls us into community with one another, and we're reminded of this wonderful community called Linsburg. We give thanks for the leadership here, gathered here today and every day, and together we seek to do that which is best for this town and for the area and for the world. We pray that you would bless the deliberations of this lobby this evening, that you would enable them to know that you are with them, guiding their hand, guiding their steps, guiding their actions. Bless them, bless us as we support them, remind us all this of your call us that you are always with us to the end of the age. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Do we have anybody here for Republican vote? Please? No? Any others to the agenda?
I just want to point out when we get to item number sixty, the paper copy is the list as it currently stands for potential appointments.
Is there appropriation of the notice on this list? Cynthia's last name is Waterman.
The mayor said he would be here about directly, so I think we'll just skip the mayor's report, let him come back to that and go through the...
He's coming here.
Main meetings. Yeah. I have a degavel, thank you.
We appreciate it.
We were just to the mayor's report.
Go ahead. Sorry, I might apologize. Sorry, we don't have a lot right now, sorry. On the air report. Any questions on the mayor? Turn the tables on you guys. Any questions on the mayor? Attorney, now let's move to the consent agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Been moved as our second?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor, please answer. Jerry.
Okay, Kelly, yes. Betty, yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item, number seven, is the election of council president.
I vote that we nominate Rick for this position.
One nomination of Rick, any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move that the nomination ceases.
Moving second?
Second.
Moving second, nomination ceases. All those in favor of Rick Martin as council president, sitting in five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, congratulations, Rick. It's coming here. P and Z?
Okay, one item, mayor, the...
I'm still trying to get going here.
Sorry, mayor. Planning Zone Commission amended their bylaws to bring it up to current day. I mean, we've recodified the city code and it kind of settles into a bi-monthly meeting in even months. Many of the references to the month of the year were wrong then, so we just fixed it up. We had a type of minor changes you should have copied and you're up to patch.
Okay.
You take the...
I was just about to take a motion that we adopt the bylaws for when we're planning Zone Commission.
Second. Been moved as second, in further discussion? Any discussion on the bylaws? This can have led to a stroke, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you.
Under rule business, we have overnight parking downtown. Chief, can you come up with that?
We discussed this at last council meeting to, as to whether we should add signs or remove the signs for limited time parking in the downtown business district. The recommendation was to meet with ADHOC and discuss how they felt about it. That meeting took place and consensus with the ADHOC was to go ahead and eliminate the no parking signs, limited time parking signs in the downtown business district, so that's my recommendation.
And you don't move? Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved as seconded to eliminate the limited time parking signs in the downtown blocks 100 North and South Main. Further discussion?
What was some of just the general discussion, whoever happened to be at the meeting, pros and cons?
Well, we brought up the street sweeping, snow, we will, we talked about the renters that live above the businesses, parking, parking spaces for the downtown businesses. And Gary suggered graciously advice that he would send a letter to the business owners in the downtown area, letting them know that we were eliminating the parking signs for people who would like them to talk to their tenants about not parking in the downtown businesses during business hours, and also advising them of the times when we clean the streets and stuff like that, so.
And not just the business owners, but the property owners?
That's correct. Additional questions? Tim, some of these signs are on holes that we drilled holes after the new sidewalk is in, you'll hold the...
If they need a hole, fill in the ground.
Fill in the ground. Okay. Additional question?
If for some reason we'll change our line later and go back to wanting to have those, is it a big deal?
Just coming before the council, making that decision.
All right, hearing no further. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Mark as you want. Next item, item ten, new business, concerns a hydro power contract. Greg, do you want to talk about this?
We received hydro electric power from the Western Area Power Authority through a contract with Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. Current contract expires in 2024. Earlier this year, actually agreed to extend that contract through 2054, and the value in doing that is not only is it a cost effective, reliable source of electric power, but in the federal budgeting process, there's always pressure to privatize that and turn it from a cost based contract into a market based contract. So it helps protect our cost structure through 2054 for that. This particular contract is with KNEA in WAPA for the extending that contract services to deliver that. And KNEA serves as our agent in that process.
And your recommendation is?
To approve.
Hearing Greg's information, what is your desire?
I vote that we approve this recommendation.
Been moved as seconded to approve the extension, is that correct?
Yes.
To approve the extension of this contract?
Do we have any kind of recourse if there was some sudden change in power, such as just well, far fast, but you know, there's breakthrough in solar technology and it knocks the bottom out of market, now that's so inexpensive, the storage for it's so inexpensive that now nobody else can appeal. We walked in, still buying that?
From the term of the contract, I can tell you right now, the federal hydro electric projects have, some of them early as the thirties, some of them were established in the fifties, and to give you an idea of cost structure for capacity, we pay about $5.89 a kilowatt through WAPA, we paid $20 and what is it, 29 cents Larry, through Westar, and energy costs are about the same, we're running at just over two cents a kilowatt hour. So from a cost standpoint, even if it theoretically did fall out and it was extremely cheap, you're still going to have capacity charges that I can't imagine would be any less than what currently exists.
I read this whole thing, sort of, I mean, I didn't understand all of it, but we're talking about WAPA being our agent.
No, KNEA.
KNEA, okay. KNEA being our agent, but even so, I mean, they would be the ones who would look at all of these fine point things that they're having on here, I mean, there are lots and lots and lots of them, and say, wait a minute, this isn't right here. I'm kind of speaking around.
Well, Kansas Municipal Energy Agency is a joint action agency, which is a group of municipal electric utilities that form the agency to operate in their behalf and in their interests.
But we wouldn't have to go to some smaller thing to the city attorney and say, what's your interpretation of this necessarily? I mean, they're acting as our agent.
Yeah, well, the city attorney has looked at this.
I looked at it. I mean, you could come to me and I'd say, let's go to KNEA.
Yeah.
That's all right.
I mean, no, KNEA has legal staff to deal with.
Okay, I'm not trying to...
Your contracted legal staff.
Yeah, I listed the issue. You know, I got really confused reading all of it, but that's me. Thank you.
Bill, did they, did we come to you and you said, let's go to KNEA?
Well, pretty much. I mean, I did review it, I didn't see anything that bothered us, but there are a lot of technical details in there.
Sure, sure. I mean, no, KNEA is, they're even passing back at us as an agency on that also.
Correct.
Okay. Additional questions? Go call, please.
Becky, yes.
Eno?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daddy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried, item ten, new business, B.
Don't you think we ought to read this whole agreement, just so we all have a good note?
I have some comfort, I have, and you have done that. I have more comfort than Bill's saying, you prefer it.
Yeah.
If you wish to do so, if you have trouble sleeping at night, this will solve that problem.
Thank you.
Next is, again, ten, new business, B, ordinance 4981, nonpartisan election. I'm going to let Greg also tell us about this.
The 2015 Kansas Legislature adopted a bill which moves local elections from April or spring elections to November or fall elections. We, you as city council, adopted charter ordinance number twenty to comply with that new statute, so the elections will be in November of odd number of years. Prior to that, all the city electoral local elections for the city of Linsburg were not partisan. The assumption and what we would like to believe at the time was that we would remain nonpartisan, so charter ordinance number twenty did not specify whether the election would be partisan or nonpartisan. We have since been informed that we need to specify whether local elections would be partisan or nonpartisan. Based upon the discussion back during the time of charter ordinance twenty, the general consensus was that the election should remain nonpartisan, and therefore, the current ordinance you're considering this evening was directed to that effect. The recommendation is if you want to remain nonpartisan elections, that you adopt ordinance number 4981.
Motion to adopt ordinance 4981, second.
Been moved as seconded on 4981. Further discussion? Greg, I'm going to ask about ordinance, charter ordinance twenty. Is this, we don't have to amend that anyway, this is just an additional ordinance to solve the partisan problem.
Correct. We, yes, we followed up the lead Kansas municipalities on this, and they said that we just regular ordinance, they don't need to be a charter ordinance.
Okay, I'm sure. Additional questions on ordinance? On the ordinance, thank you. 4981. Go call, please.
Betty, yes. Daddy, yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item eleven, we have a second session, and we have them. Move to department head reports, starting with ten, public works.
Well, again, I would keep short.
There's a problem on Bird.
I was talking about the fact that we recently added a, of our employees, a meter reader and a waste water operator, and that really is kind of traumatic, because if we don't read meters, then we don't get paid very well. So anyway, we're lucky, we have the previous meter reader for the four that can pick up the slack and take care of it and be able to train whoever we might hire. We do have some pretty decent applications in, wastewater president and I will be reviewing those this week, and we'll start the interview setup, so hopefully we'll, we will focus more on someone who will fit in at the wastewater plant than we feel like we can, pretty much teach anybody to read meters, but we'll argue to teach someone that can appreciate wastewater plants. That's what I say. Yeah, questions about that?
Tim, did they come with criteria wastewater one or two, or are you looking at anything required to come in with, or?
They, this is a, they're a regular position, they're required to have class one interview year, they have to have a year in before they can test, and then they need to test and pass one.
Was there any call, any ad for somebody that may already be there that has wastewater one or two?
There was no call for it, explicit as an interim, it was okay. For somebody who's experienced and had experience.
Did that exclude anybody from applying?
I'm not excluding anybody.
But somebody may read that and say, well, it's entry level, and they're not really looking for my one or two, my experience already had.
Well, it might, I had not had any indication that somebody in my two was out there, but wants to come here.
I don't know that they're from one or two, I just sound like...
It's why's that?
Okay.
About three if you get a two.
Okay. Other questions, anybody for Mr. Dunn, unreferring wastewater? Thank you, Tim, appreciate it. Tim, why haven't been a lot on my plate?
Yes, my, but other than case load, we're at the 163 cases so far for the year, so we're staying busy. EMAS continues to stay pretty steady, they're at 150 runs for the year, which is about 1.25 runs per day, so.
Compared with the last year?
1.5.
Is the 163 high, low, average for this coming year?
About average, on average, so we're staying busy. Twenty of those were car bird booters, so there were quite a few bird booters there for extended time. So that, you know, the stats are keeping us pretty, pretty average right now. The only new thing I have, we have collected bicycles, and we keep them for a period of time, then all, you know, claims them and we destroy them, and we recently worked out a deal with Tackle, that we would turn over our bicycles to Tackle, so we will hopefully be helping Tackle here in the future.
If you, on bicycle, I don't know if they still do it, or does it have corrections? So they would take bicycle in whatever condition, refurbishment, they would send them by the truckload to other countries or wherever.
Yeah, we used to do that, we used to, Dave from the streets department, we used to take them up to elsewhere for us, but kind of felt a part there for a while, so we're just getting rid of it.
Do you think that the general public is aware that, and since I had a bicycle turn up, I had a bicycle turn up in my yard that obviously didn't belong to anybody in the neighborhood, and that's when I learned that you do have a collection of bicycles. Do you think the community at large is aware that they have a bicycle missing, that perhaps a call to the police station is a good idea?
Well, I'm hoping so. Most people when their bicycles are missing, call the police, but not everyone does, so, and some of the bicycles that we've left aren't in very good shape either, so some of them may not want their bicycles.
I mean, I've got my own cell.
Hopefully, some pick it up maybe, but it's pretty, pretty happy that we'll be able to help that and encourage them.
Questions of, I mean, did you have more?
No.
Any questions, other questions of safety, Tim?
Car being utilized, yeah.
It's up and running, you know, lights, radio, camera, radar, they're all working at it. We haven't got the cage put in yet, but that's about it. Correct cage and mount roof of weapons, so pretty good.
I mean, traded the old one in, is that correct?
Yeah, kind of.
Have we started code enforcement, or sorry, environmental code enforcement yet?
Yeah, I've probably sent out about 12 leave letters for tall grass, so you know, we've been hitting them pretty hard with the last week and a half.
Tall grass, does that apply only to the front yard?
No.
Okay. Tall grass, definition is 12 or 15 inches?
12 inches.
Thank you. Ollie?
As a couple of you know, we could do our members of ADHOC and business roundtables, while we had partnered, the CDB office was partnering with ADHOC businesses to do some marketing through postcards, and we went through our first box of 1,000 that we had in the middle of, and we are partway into our second box of 1,000, so we're hoping to be done with those by the end of the day, and then another month after that, we started a second round with different postcards, and we're receiving some response back from this already, so that has been really good. At the Central Conference Center, we have been receiving a lot of phone calls recently for 2017 events and weddings, so that has been fabulous, and we are getting ready to host the end of this month, an Indian wedding for a family from India, that will be bringing in busloads of people and doing their traditional parade down Main Street to the conference center, and they'll just do a long walk parade, and they'll be leasing both floors of the facility for their wedding event, so that's something new and different, and they're actually bringing in decorators from Dallas, Texas, so it's a big deal, and it'll be fun for our community, something a little bit different. So along with that, and the CDB office is also trying to partner with the conference center in ways that we utilize the conference center for visitors. Today, we received a phone call from an officer at Fort Leavenworth, and as of August ninth, we will be hosting 124 officers for a one day event in Chautauqua across Kansas, their three stops will be the president, Albert Ray Abeline, Liz Lori Wilchak. So we will have 124 officers in our community in August, and they will be spending an hour with us, that's all, but we are hoping to have it at the conference center and provide them coffee and Swedish pastries, and I'm hoping to stay home with these persons. We were talking about, we wanted to do a community tour, and it's something that was pretty short, people are telling people that they didn't come around like many of the buses, so we'll see how that goes. I may talk them until a little bit longer if we can, we can do that, but excited about this thing, so we will have an updated sales plan for you by the next briefing, so things are going well.
Additional questions, Ollie, anything? Thank you, Ollie.
Appreciate your question.
Thank you to all staff, those reports I think are very helpful, and finally, for that, and it's not a pity for council to ask any questions that they may have been asked in public or have seen things themselves, so. Number thirteen, other, are there other items from council? You wish to talk about this time?
I'm not sure, I guess that'll be the time. I've been approached by a few golfers, just curious about updates, the status of the golf course with personnel change and what we're going to do, and then also update on the golf topic.
Do you ready to answer all of those for them?
No, I told them I'd like to throw the question up. Well, parents' last day is Sunday, the eighth. As we reported, it's right now, we're soliciting reservations to fill the position, we also have visited with, actually, two different golf courses, superintendents at different golf courses, about the possibility of consulting services. We've received one proposal, and hopefully we'll have another one here to consider, probably not yet this week, but early next week, to provide services during the inter, those services would primarily deal with green, when I say green maintenance, more of the chemicals and airifying and that piece of it, and just kind of oversee to make sure that things aren't being missed at the golf course for many of its hands. So timeline, I can't tell you right now what the timeline is because, you know, it'll be open until it's filled, unless we're directed otherwise.
I've reached out to a couple contacts I had, just sending information out, and I appreciate anybody else that, Betty, you were in the business for Robo, you know, old super, old superminister, so, but yeah, if anybody has any contacts or anything, please direct them through, I came through Greg, was able to give out some information that he provided me with, so. On the football side, I think, and that was pretty clear in the letter at this point, it's on hold until we, till we do some sort of superintendent.
In the meantime, would this be an opportunity for any of the longtime golfers to shoot up again and maybe golf where it is, or is there the opportunity or need, I guess, to be my question? They didn't ask for that question. Well, I'm going to answer some, I'm going to, we'll take all the help we can get, I'm going to put it that way. I mean, from a lawyer's standpoint, we have that pretty well covered, you know, if they have expertise in turf grass, I mean, that's, that's where we're really going to be lacking is in the turf grass area, is because, I mean, that's a special knowledge that we just don't possess as staff, you know, the chemicals, the, you know, whether it be fertilizer, treating for fungus, treating for, you know, whatever particular issues may come up, that's going to be where, that's why we're looking at consultants to, for that particular area. I mean, there's always things like maintaining flower beds and stuff like that, that have been done over the years, I mean, that's always needed whether we have a golf course superintendent on staff or not, so.
The biggest help would be for... The biggest help would be for everyone to grab their clubs and five of their best buddies and go play around golf.
Definitely, yes.
Greg, if they did have a wish or desire to help or somebody, who would they contact? Say y'all. Kay?
Kay.
Put that word out there, Kay, just the one that you're referring to. We just bought this thing. Good question, are there any other questions? I think our time here is done, what is your desire?
Moved, were you adjourned?
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you very much. Thank you, Rick, covering for the next.